Our tech guy is not here tonight.
We have to. Everywhere. So we're ready to call order our first meeting today is October twenty second. Twenty twenty five, we'll start with the rope. John Evans.
Jesse Roper.
Rebecca Bailey.
Sarah Brown.
Joe Burke. And we have. Here's I had her. She can't unmute. Very questions here. Okay, via text and also on Zoom call, okay? Do we have any public comment? Anybody else? No. Dennis, do you have anything interesting? And then I think that would be the perfect time to add an amendment to the agenda. Um, we're gonna add an action item for voting on location of Arbor Day. And kids park day. They're okay with that? Set a motion.
I'll motion that we amend our agenda to include um voting on location for Arbor. Day and Kids to Park Day.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Uh, we'll go through the approval minutes first. Did everybody have a chance to look at their minutes from September tenth?
Yes.
Did anybody see anything wrong or want to make any edits? Adjustments? Corrections?
No.
I like the more than the grave. I'm really happy with how these are looking now.
Yeah, the notes are really clear and laid out.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, that's great.
So, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good.
Was that Laurel?
Yep.
Yo. So I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September tenth twenty twenty five meeting.
Second to approve of the minutes.
We need a motion.
Oh.
You gotta make a motion.
I motioned to approve the minutes last meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Hi.
Excellent. So I think we just do the amended item first. So we're in discussion of where we're gonna have our day. Um, and we're we're gonna have kids parts. Um, it's been brought to my attention before they we need to make sure we're having a large venue to. Hopefully get more people out and we're also doing it in places that maybe we're not servicing. Already. So if you guys want to throw out some opinions, um, my. Idea that I've kind of tossed around is that uh we do something on the east side and something on the west side. Um, one on each and then obviously kids parks, we got to have some rooms set everything up, so. My thoughts are um uh WCP. But if you guys have any other ideas, love the hero. And then also something on the east side, we did Arbor Day last year at Park Meadows. We can do it there again.
We wanted to.
But we didn't. Two years ago with Park Meadows, remember it got rained out. Oh, that's right. Oh. In that process, we still did put in new trees over there and we did that whole landscape. Last year we did a harvest park. Okay, yeah, that's right.
What if we did it? What if we did it in a section of the trail? That goes under the interstate so you can have a large, you can kind of use the trail system and show off the trail that goes from part to part. So you can kind of explore multiple ones.
More well built.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
So you have like a central location and then you kind of have like a walking tour maybe or you know activities at different sides of each. Each side of the interstate.
I do like how that gives good access to the west side to get over there with the underpass. I really like that idea.
I feel like a lot of people don't know or like there's new lights put in all this stuff that's been. Kind of redone to it. Now, I don't know, maybe just show that off and then that way you can show the trail system, our new maps. Kind of feature the new map that's out right now so you can.
Yeah, it'd be huge to do. That's a great idea. I like that a lot. Safe routes, it's not, we haven't done it here, but like nationally they do walk, walk and roll. So they have like water, like a white water station would be for a five K or something like that, but just stations that have music. And like food or something like that as if you were along a race, so there'd be stops. Um, so that might be something, so they do that for like stops on the way to school. For that kind of event, but I think that could be some similar for this one.
And they do it to bike to work in Fort Collins too.
Yeah.
So you could even get like other businesses involved. Maybe find, you can talk about the sponsorships and that new sponsorship packet for Parks and Rec that you were talking about, you could find. Kind of get that out to a lot of businesses. You know, we could have a station for things that are upcoming like master plan, we can give more people. Um, like at each park, it kind of talks about the amenities, all that stuff, just exactly like what you're saying.
Are we talking? Sorry, so Arbor Day first, are we talking about April? Is that, or just all of the above, we're just talking about various locations?
Uh.
Or events, I should say.
Why don't we start with? Figuring out where Kids to Park Day is gonna be, even though Arbor Day is gonna be first.
Okay.
A little bit of background.
I kind of like the parks at WCP.
Okay.
Kids Park Day?
Oh.
Well, yeah, cuz then we can set out and show all the amenities and then we could also show off the memorial, like where the Memorial Gardens are gonna go.
So really wanted to put this to obviously to post. Um, we have other things internally that don't have to go there. If you can see, this is our. Our list of some of the events that we're just kind of trying to get through. What we do need to schedule is pretty much all this to get it into the twenty twenty six recreation guide. With Kids to Park Day. I'm, I'm really pushing the fishing derby. To not be on Kids to Park Day, but let them do what they're gonna do, but the last years have been a real big challenge with the water. Um, and trying to coordinate. The fishing derby and getting the fish from Colorado Parks and Wildlife because it's like to the last minute, like are we gonna get the ditch run, are we not, or the pond's gonna be filled? So I'm working with uh Kuanas to ensure that maybe they push it back a couple of weeks because it's always been that first week in June that. We can pretty much guarantee. Or knows how much snowpack will get. But that we we should have our rights to water over at Wellville, so if they push that off, we can kind of do Kids Park everywhere. Internally, we were just trying to spitball. There would be some people would be pretty cool about with me. The week before we typically turn splash pad on. But we totally could do it. We don't have to wait for Memorial Day to turn the splash pad on, we can do that anytime we want. And then we were also talking about. It's always been. A struggle because the fishing derby is early, we partner with them, but we're also running flag football and soccer. And those are all on the other side of town.
Right.
If we do it on that side of town and we're not tied to the fishing derby and don't start at eight.
No.
We can start Kids to Park Day at four thirty or two thirty or whatever and then make our first movie in the park. And Kids to Park Day all at the same time, so we would do. Blowups, yard games, promote all of the stuff that Laurel was saying, I didn't even think about like the, you know. The Memorial Gardens, you know. The Veterans Gardens, excuse me. And playgrounds there.
And it is our car, it is our park, it's more ADA accessible too. We could really, you know, make sure people understand and know that we have ADA equipment up there.
That's great. It's what's our largest part two, so. Kind of makes sense to have everything go off our our big grand. Park. For for, you know, that directive.
Kids to Park Day.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm on board. I think that well, WCP is the perfect spot for Kids Park Day.
We could even get clubs. From different, you know, like the pickleball club, all these different places to kind of. Show kids new stuff where you get like, you got to know, you guys have been doing frisbee, right? And do like all the baseball, you could show up all that stuff, you have the batting cages.
Batting cages would be open for that, um, even if we don't have our batting cage attendants hired, which usually they are at that point, we would absolutely. No, that's the directive.
Mm hmm.
One perspective as well, but yeah. What's the feasibility of having um? Like a disc golf basket that can just be placed at a stand like they have over by Devon? And then just bringing some discs out and just having. The opportunity for something different and then being able to tell people we have that here in town.
Mm hmm.
So why don't we? Let's vote on that location voting, location and then. In a future agenda or maybe at our retreat, we can put on the agenda to. Plan early enough so. Staff knows everything that we're getting into well, you know, months ahead of time and it's just all that on cuz we. You know, we'll have to do our special event permit and then we'll have to do our safety plan and all the stuff that comes along with getting vendors, if one of you something like that. So if we vote on location for that, then we can as a group sit down and. I might even, if we do that a a regular meeting, I might even bring Emma and Kristen and I mean Kristen, Ellie, all of them in and then. But you guys just collaborate on what's available.
Yeah, that's cool. We can set up a little driving range too.
We, we just uh one of the new rectings that we got this year, like have you seen the, we got the. Uh, the golf buckets.
Oh, fun.
Out, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think WCP is the way to go. It gives you all, I mean, it is, it's our community park, so it's labeled as that, it's the community space. I think you're right on with like the what we need for space wise, it gives us a lot of potential.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Well, since we're voting on location, I think that I'm hearing pretty good solid voice for WCP.
As for the Kids to Park Day, right?
Yes, the Kids Park. Uh, so I would probably just go on separately, so. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve WCP as the location for this coming year's Kids' Heart Day. Twenty twenty six.
I'll make a motion that we hold Kids to Park Day on Saturday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty six at WCP Wellington Community Park.
You have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Good. Roberty. I'm liking, I'm liking the idea at Wellville. I like the idea of doing the other side of the interstate.
Mm hmm.
Um, I think you bring up a good point about accessibility for people on the west side. Showing off the improvements they've done to the uh underpass and. It's probably a place that I know we just put the dock up, but there not everybody's using the fish.
Yeah.
You know, it just, it raises more awareness for the park itself. So.
Do you kind of want to make it like? Like what you were saying Rebecca, like a almost a bike to work day or like bike to your park day where. You can go along the trail and you can see all of it, so it's like it starts at one spot. Let's just say at our um. You know, you were just saying at the uh the disc park over here and then you send it all the way across the trail under the interstate, you have like those vendors lined up across the trail, so you can. Show people like, hey, if you live over here on the on the west side, there is accessibility to get over here. You know, these are the improvements we've made along the trail system, these are where we put up these um. You know, all the the fixture bike. Run those up, yeah, see the bike stations?
Not that, but we'll be soon.
Perfect, so it's like a good idea to show all of the, all of that park at least, you know.
I will say.
The trail system, no, it's kind of a big.
Get that expensive. Again, maybe what we should do is is if that's the goal. Collaborate with the team because we want. Uh, if we want to do it early, we will be spread out at youth sports that day, which is why um. Which will be. Three, four of our employees.
Right.
It might be fun to do in the afternoon evening. And maybe you have a band over it while they'll. Like live music starting it.
The, the one thing I'd say is if we want to do Arbor Day like we have in the past. Typically, um. Any tree company that would like to come in and donate a tree and do the tree planting and show the planting and then Ross come to. Usually they like to do that in the morning cuz it's Saturday and their crews are off and they're donating their time. Um, and donating the trees, so usually it's been like a nine o'clock event.
Yeah.
That being said, it doesn't have to do that. But would at least I think going from Wellville. Down the trail to um the disc golf would be cool.
You can call it the Arbor Day Jamboree, you could start it off in the morning with like the planting of the trees. And then the festivities start from there. Right, like a name.
It's a huge undertaking, I mean, it's definitely gonna need like all hands on deck and making sure there's enough staff and volunteers, but.
Yeah.
And you get, you could also just say, hey, that's kind of the vision as we move forward, we're gonna start a little smaller. And then each year maybe we add something on, but you know, start. With a little bit of that, even if we have something over right on the other side of the underpass, like where that neighborhood is and the trail from Linear Park. Is stationed, so you get that kind of crossover and then we could talk about. Like as the years go on, maybe this is somewhere we always do our Arbor Day and this is, you know, as as the disc golf stuff goes in and.
Disc golf tournament would be cool and we do that.
I find.
The bank, yeah.
Yeah.
The building, yeah, I don't wanna say great vision, not, yeah, but like committing right now.
Mm hmm.
Well, committing to the date and the time is pretty much all we're looking for for staff, I love the idea. Let's get the team in and talk about that, what we actually can produce, but.
Right.
Absolutely.
If you can make it like a, you know, through the years, bike to work, like stuff in Fort Collins, it's something that becomes so popular, like for people to look forward to, it's the beginning of the year. You know, um, mid-April, weather's usually starting to get a little bit nicer and make it like a big town thing. For, for everybody to kind of show off the parks and you know.
Right.
You know, like you guys said, just keep adding on little by little here and there, keep showing off different parks, add a tournament. Get a band at the park.
Mm hmm.
All those things would be so much fun.
I think it's those little.
So far away.
Yeah, it's those little pieces of with event planning of. Not getting too big, too fast where it's not done well, where it's like, this is our vision, we get people excited, maybe we find people in the community who this is something they're really passionate about, we can pull them in. But let's make sure that the first one that we do. Is really well done.
Mm hmm.
So that we continue to build that.
That piece is sustainable and we grow on it, absolutely.
Yes, and we look at like, hey, what worked and what didn't?
Yeah.
And we make adjustments.
Yeah, and and I will say again. Kuanas wants to put the special events permit in. Or whatever day, you know, like there's other things that we have to consider, I know Arbor Day is different than towards to Park Day, but.
Right.
We always have to. And start growing and getting the community used to what we're doing and then maybe we make that the station.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
So if it, if Arbor Day involves. Trees and people moving. Hopefully in the next few years, we can be like, guess what, we can expand it cuz we're growing the trail or whatever the vision is for the master plan.
Mm hmm, I love it.
Yep.
I think it's great.
Yes. Okay. So again, what I'm hearing is it sounds a lot like Hills and Parks that we're probably gonna have to either do it at the retreat. Or we could have a special meeting at some point on a different day than our normal meeting. Just to gather ideas and get things down and start being able to maybe like you said, stage some of these things in to your men. So like you said, we're starting with a good foundation and then just moving forward, we can just add pieces to it.
Yeah.
You know, the better we can make these events, so. What I'm hearing again from what everybody's saying is that Wellville sounds like a great place to go, um. So I will entertain a motion for uh proposal for a location for.
This was your.
I've I've motioned to accept. On Saturday, April twenty fifth Arbor Day at Wellville Park.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Excellent. I love the ideas.
Yep.
We were just up in Steamboat and they have a beautiful trail along the the Yampa River right there and under all the underpasses, they have these gorgeous murals that just made me so excited, yeah. Excited for the stuff that we have.
Well.
We have someone who wants to put a mural there.
I was saying it'd be fun.
It's a good goal. Okay. Move on to the rest of our action items here, uh, pros, master plan and communities, feasibility study up. Right, so some exciting news, um. We've gotten. So far, three pieces of information regarding the statistically valid survey. You know, a pretty decent document to parcel through very large. An engagement overview. And then a program's master plan that has just come in from Barry Dunn the last few days. Where we as an internal team are gonna kind of parcel through it, we have a meeting with Barry Dunn this Friday. To kind of see what that looks like and how it fully correlates, like. If you take one of those pieces, you might read it and think one thing, but all three of them really go together, so we're gonna talk about. The best way to basically take it to the next step, whether that's to uh most likely to the board trustees to give them an update so that that's the point for the public. But we have a lot of documentation to go through. Um, so. Really, that's the biggest update I have, but um. It's gonna be really cool because they've given us a ton of things to look at and think about. And a ton of touch points that our community has basically produced for us. And uh, once we get into the next step of. Fully getting our, you know, they gave us a program's master plan on paper, then we just do the visioning about our programs and. What the next steps are, so that'll be. We're trustees visioning, hopefully this group visioning, then back in with our internal vision, so. Basically, we're gonna kind of reset and go back into. Uh, another planning mode or another grouping up of. Um, you know, maybe not everybody that we took from the outside cuz we have like. One little meetings or something like that with people at all the different groups and all the different partners that we have. Now that they've given their input, it's really up to the groups that are going to spearhead it moving forward and then do the visioning and then once we've done our visioning, there will be. Another portion of just like. Public visioning, we gotta figure out what that specifically looks like and. I, I hope you guys, you know, still are on board with everything Barry Dunn has. Done, um, produced so far, but they were out in the community so many times and they were. Trying to partner in everything that we were doing in Parks and Rec and coming here and. Work trustees like. Revisioning what their ideas for how they're gonna get back out to the. The boards and the community a second time when the old mother staff are like. Taking the info and making it a master plan. So when, when the information gets consolidated and understood, that's when, you know. Working out of this board as well and. Get to kind of do our thing.
Excited.
Awesome.
So, so much fun, so, so much information. Like too much in the first few days that I've seen it's like you just read through it like, okay. Second and third time, I'll parcel through it like take a breath. And like really try to understand it rather than just being like, oh, fuck goodness, look at all this.
Yeah.
This is what community thinks, um, and then Perry, so. That's where we're at, uh, basically in the middle of phase two or end of phase two. Almost done with phase three and then start visioning phase four. Or somewhere about, you know, two to three weeks. Well, I would say two weeks behind, but that's okay, um. There's no real specific timeline, um, you know, trying to keep it here and there, um. I, I would just say I'd rather personally have. An actionable quality. Piece of information that the community can use than just trying to rush through it, stay on the timeline.
Mm hmm.
So. Uh, but the goal still is to kind of get done in that. April. Hopefully late March, middle of April. Well, that's a. Betsy, okay, any thoughts? Exciting.
Yeah.
Can't wait to see some of it. Did you know when you're gonna present it to the trustees yet or? We don't, it's, um, so I told this, the same statement I just had for the most part, I gave to our leadership group. And it was at pretty much the director of Patty to like. Okay, we'll go back in with Patty, Eric. Kelly, only and then um, you know, pulling the other people, I mean, some public works and some. Um, planning and then Barry Dunn and just kind of make that first effort to see what will be the best timeline. Uh, there, I will say there are a lot of things that are still on the docket for this year for the board of trustees to kind of get through, there's a lot of planning stuff. That they have to see through, there's still budget, so some of that might be. Right, right after turn of year, couple of weeks into the new year. But the good thing is that if we know when that's gonna be, we'll make our visioning plan and then once we present that, we'll. Start following boom, boom, boom. And then phase five is um. Looking at how to make it actionable and the sixth is the lasting action and implementation, so that'll be. Can you make sure that if you. Set a date or a meeting to present to the trustees, I will assign a meeting that you let the board know.
Absolutely.
If somebody wants to attend that trustee meeting.
Yeah.
And I would, I will encourage everybody to orderly zoom in if, yeah, if you can, cuz it'll be. Pretty important, um. You, you know, it is. It's, it's really, it's an interesting spot because we could, we can't just go to the board and just say like. You know, here, put it in the packet, here's all the information and then it's up, we have to. Insectalize the best ways to make sure that everybody understands what the information's saying because we have a hundred page document and two fifty page documents. So like, can't just say like, here's everything, I'll like, like, take it as it is, it's gotta be very reconfined and understood before, cuz thinking. And see what. And then. It really, it should, you know, we're trustees are the ones that need to see that information at their meeting first, so. Just excited for it.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah.
Really excited. I felt like you were, well, I know, um, it's been a while since we've all had a chance to touch base and you may have touched on this at the last meeting, but. There was enough in like surveys and information received.
Yeah.
That's great.
We got over the number of surveys, uh, they kept it open, they were super close and I said, will you just keep it open like through the weekend? They hit their mark and went over their mark and their mark is basically determined on percentage of population. Um, and they, they think that they know like. They say like in ninety-four percent. Um, probability with like a plus or minus of. One percent that. At the amount of surveys that they received. If we had got double, triple, quadruple. It's only gonna push plus or minus one to two percent margin of error. So if it's two percent margin of error, you're looking at something that if the community were to be extremely desirable. It takes it down to just a little bit less extremely desirable, right? So it's like, it's not gonna change much. Of, of what the community wants and, and uh they do this. All across the nation, big, small, so they're, they're very confident of, of what they've gotten back. And it's not, the, the thing is, it's not just a statistically valid survey and that's. Bringing it all together, it's all the events, all the touch points, all the social media, the maps, all the comments, they take those and. Put them out and hit point each one, how many get likes and all that and then bring it all together and, you know.
That's awesome.
So I can't wait to be able to present that in a public format. Anybody else on this topic?
Nice.
Really exciting. Really. Forward to this. It's been a while coming so. Yeah, and and just so we know, every meeting we talk about, just like, we're here till the end and the end doesn't stop in May, it stops when. You know. When. You run out of grants to help, you find when we've, you know, completed as many goals as possible on the master plan. You know. So we're here for a long time.
Awesome.
Good year. Okay, we'll move on. Prost bylaws. We are here to adopt them if everybody has read through them and. Has understood and agreed. And if there is anything else that maybe somebody looked at, they didn't agree with or they want to make an adjustment to. That would be the time.
I haven't done back over it since, but did we, did we update it with the um? Uh, missing the meetings, was that added to it, is that part of the bylaws?
Should be.
It was changed last time.
Okay.
Or, yeah, it should have been too.
Uh, fix. Prost advisory board members can be subject to a vote for removal of their pros board seat during the term if they're absent from more than. Or regular meetings within a twelve month timeframe unless there are underlying circumstances deemed acceptable by the voting members of the pros advisory board.
Yeah, it's, they don't want to jump the behavior.
Well, we've had this at quite a few of our last meetings, so we've, we've had time to discuss it.
Mm hmm.
If any, if Envy has anything else, I'd. Feel free to say something, but if not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the first bylaws.
I nominate to our nominee, motion.
Make a.
I make a motion to approve uh process uh new bylaws.
You have a second?
I second this.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Yes.
I.
I.
Hi.
Laurel. Any names?
Did we fix the section on?
Did we fix the section on article three, number five?
What was the thought on that? Just removing it in general?
No, I, the one I'm looking at, guys, sorry, number five, it just, the one I'm copy, I'm looking at just says it ends in shall, so I I just wanna make sure that was added.
The only thing I see is item number four and it says shall, but then there's another line underneath underneath, it says be three years. Is that what you see, Laura Lynn?
No, I must be looking at older copy.
Are you talking about the transfer removal or the uh length of terms to be served?
The, there was one right above it, it must have gotten fixed and I just didn't see it. It's good.
Laura Lynn, do we have an eyebrow for that?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Then that passes. Moving on, twenty twenty-six parks and rec, post-budget discussion. Who wants to start? Can everybody still see this? Uh I guess the notes aren't necessary. Um so for those of you that have seen this in the past. Uh this is basically the parks fund and expenditures and our general letter ones for proposed budget. Twenty twenty-six as well as uh what is what is proposed to the board of trustees as well as the. Um the budget that was approved in twenty twenty-five, where we were halfway through the year. And what we estimate um. Is um where we are and what we still need to do for twenty twenty-five. And then this gives also just in, you know, a historical perspective, so you see twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and then what's requested. Sorry, by any way. But throughout, throughout the process. Of budgeting, there's uh year to year, there's always things that can, will and need to change, um additions, subtractions, cuts. And I I just think that um, you know. The town and our our staff. After going through the first round to the board and then back to the second round after finding what the town um.
That scared me.
Expenditures versus revenues where we were asked to cut, uh you know, uh a decent amount um. It was basically around one million dollars of uh funding that wasn't. Quite generated in our revenues that were hopefully expected, so um. We took probably about only two weeks to turn around as a team. And cut as much to the general fund um proposed budget in twenty twenty-six. Um there were a couple of things that after my first round, our first round, I should say, excuse me. Reduced a little bit, but um there's not a lot of areas that we can reduce. Um one thing that's, I won't say that it's completely indifferent. Than other departments, I think public works probably falls along the same line, especially streets like. It's it's really hard to predict from year to year because we deal in the outdoor services and um. Not only do we have to rely on revenue projections that are kind of outside of our handle, although we can. Predict rep revenues, which is something that we do, and it's pretty, pretty similar year over year um. A a lot of times, you know, I find myself looking at budget lines, I'm like, oh, I could use another ten thousand dollars there or six thousand less than this one. But then the the following year, I'm like, geez, that completely changed because. We had a super windy, dry winter and we didn't get to water enough trees, so we need to put more trees or we need. To increase the budget for winter watering, you know, like increase that budget line so that doesn't happen, so. I'm not trying to make a scapegoat, it's just like, there are so many variables when you're outside or. Or so someone bursts down, so slide or, you know, there's just all sorts of things that are unaccounted for. In the the operations, but this is, this is pretty much what we did. Um into this year, we can go line by line, if anybody just has some general questions. Um you know, one of the things that I wanted to do and it got approved is, we used to have a. A line for tree replacement trimming and then tree spray and over the last few years, I like, I mean. There are so many different techniques for tree care and some years we need to increase spraying like. If pests come up here and we know we need to get ahead of it, like um different beetles of all sorts. Uh we need a new pest control program because the, you know. Maybe we don't plant as many trees and we push a lot of money to saving the trees, so I basically just broke those two lines into one tree care, it's like. You know, let's just take care of the trees in any way, but if we see that there's not, I'm gonna try to plant as many trees that are feasible for us to take care of as possible. That's the ultimate goal, right, is to get as many trees that are gonna stay alive in Wellington. Varieties are pretty tough, but um we have some good tree companies that I've worked with, they've done a really good job, um so that's a change. Um kind of asked originally for a little bit more at this one. And then the second round went back down to what was requested in twenty twenty-five. Um this is just something that everybody had to add, it's a requirement that we. Allow our employees to get mileage reimbursement, that's nothing, it's a it's a hundred dollars, usually we use town vehicles, so I was like, we don't. We need much, but if someone wants to accomplish, you know, then. Um couple lines, there's, you know, I always see the need for a few different things, we haven't redone a lot of the. Um not all of the soft trails, uh but we're really trying to do that, so a little bit more money there. And um we were possibly overshoot this, so. Really tried not to reduce as much as possible, so that's the park side. Um nothing crazy that wasn't there before.
Billy, do you feel like this takes into account the master pant plan recommendations?
Well, he he here's one thing I'll say about that, this is right here, what we're looking at, this is just our operating. Budget.
Okay.
Um we do have a little flexibility uh for minor park improvements.
Yeah.
So uh a few of you weren't on the board, that line, I don't used to be forty thousand dollars. And it got eaten up very quickly, um if we wanted to do. A new trail or if everyone needed to replace lights or it's minor park improvements, upgrades, all that kind of stuff, so there's that line and then there's the. Our big lines are that line and the general R and M, which is repair and maintenance. So kind of parcelling those out is a little bit tricky, like what's, what's a minor improvement? If you're upgrading lighting to something broke, is that a repair or is it just an upgrade, so like, we only had forty thousand and then thirty in the other line, like. In our general area that one, real quick.
Yeah.
So at the direction and actually John spoke um very eloquently to the board. In an update that two years ago, but yeah, two years ago, starting in the last year that we need more money. If we ever wanted to resurface something, we just don't have that ability to do it like this. It's gotta be a capital project, we're not looking to do something, one thing with all sixty-five thousand dollars, that would be like total capital ask.
Okay.
So let me go back to your question and say, this doesn't really, a ton of this budget right here doesn't align with the master plan. We could do some small things that would be suggested, but that maybe would come from this group saying like, hey, let's. We'd love to get, you know, port in place here, well, some toss a hundred and twenty, well, how about just this section, well, we can maybe do that for twenty grand in the top up, you know. The capital budget, which is a little further down, that's where we would get into the larger projects that maybe. The master plan would say like, we need to appropriate, I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to try to. Acquire land for trails somewhere, you know, like that's just something that might come up and I know trails are hot on everybody's mind, connecting trails, we know that, that's. Definitely part of a pros master plan or pay uh an adjacent open space just came in like. That will be dictated hopefully by the master plan, like what people want. We don't right now have a lot in this and we don't have a lot. Money, since the master plan's not out, it's hard to just say like, I want two hundred thousand dollars of CIP to go to an unnamed project. That will be named later.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-six um. But one thing that uh and thank you so much. For doing that, one thing Rebecca said at our roundtable meeting with the board is like, it doesn't take into account anything. And we've got momentum, we've got, we will have actionable items that we can look for, so. What we would do is maybe partway through the year, once we see where revenues are at in the general fund. We might be able to do budget amendments and go back to the board and say, we do want a straight sixty-five thousand. To do X, Y, or Z based on this plan that was approved.
Yeah.
And we need to start moving forward because we got five to ten years to do this and we have. Or if it's a dirt, it might not even something new, it could be a deferred maintenance thing, right, like, we need to just throw this out there, we need to completely redo the half pipes at the skateboard. Just, I'm just randomly spit on like, whatever that's gonna cost, because that is something that is failing, it's not safe or you know, all that stuff.
Yeah.
So yes, there is an opportunity potentially, but it would have to be through budget amendments.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, okay.
But the twenty twenty-seven will probably have a few do, and and it has been proposed to the board, as you can see up here on this right side. A lot of these projects in twenty twenty-seven, we know for a fact that viewpoint has been pushed off over multiple years. I kind of put my foot down, we got a full, like Erica and I went out and got three different playground companies to look into this. And right now, to to redo viewpoint with port in place, total, we are looking at somewhere like right at. Four hundred and fifteen to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so we updated some of these numbers. To reflect that this should be a priority project, not because of the master plan, but because this has been pushed off. I will s- just gonna throw this out there and assume that it will be something will be brought up in the level of service. To the community around there that this pros board has been correct in assuming. That there's too much use at that park for the quality of equipment that's there and how old the equipment actually is. So um I will say, a lot of the stuff that we have on here will probably be justified.
Well, who knows too, in twenty thirty, that could be five hundred fifty thousand dollars for a company to come and do that.
And that's the thing that we're talking about, like port in place has gone up. It it was uh, what was it, it was eleven thousand dollars just to do the border for safety reasons around WCP, just for the border. Eleven thousand dollars and it's only uh twelve inches wide, right? It's it's, it's not to think about how much this is, so if we don't start taking action on this. Then what, we're gonna lose momentum and our deferred maintenance is gonna get more deferred.
Right.
And the opportunity to expand programming or expand opportunities is just gonna keep getting pushed out. So having that opportunity to do budget adj- adjustments. Um is is the way that in twenty twenty-six, we would take care of some of the stuff.
Yeah, the topic that I introduced too is, you know, master plan will be done midway through twenty twenty-six. We shouldn't wait for a whole budget cycle to even start considering starting anything, so. I asked the board to be open to amendments, once we have defensible projects based off of community feedback, absolute direction we need to be going in. So we can start those as quickly as possible, you know, if if the money's there. So that'll be a big task for this board next year, I think, too, is to really. Stand by that new master plan and see if you can push anything into twenty twenty-six.
And and I think that would be part of the visioning, right, like what can we get done now? What are the long ten-year goal? And where can we fit the other pieces in between and what is the importance based on the community feedback that we can tackle? And then obviously, you know, that's bringing in finance and revenue projections and just saying like, if we can do one or two every year, can we do? You know, a medium sized and a large size one year, three smaller sized, a very big one, whatever, whatever that is. Um and that's again, not not all new, a lot of that will be replacing what we have existing, but. Finding that things are failing and the community needs upgrades. I'll always go back to, it's just all about having the actionable plan, based on community feedback. So really for capital, just because it's, you know, and and one thing that I've been very vocal with the board about is like. Last year, when we got the the doc. And we asked for the re- reappropriation of the money to do the dismount course in the park.
Yeah.
One of the questions is like, this isn't in the five or ten year capital, so how are we? What are we looking at? And one of the things I will always say is, there's never been a good capital outlay. So that's why the master plan is so important, so we're we're just doing things that we hear from the community. And doing the things that we find would be beneficial um, so now that we have that, we'll have that plan, we can. Put it into action, so it's not, it's not built out, it's gonna be built out and you'll see a lot more. Uh structure to this into into twenty thirty and beyond.
A lot of work, well, yeah, it's a lot to break it down and and to look ahead, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it's fun, it's my job and I enjoy it. Um we'll go back up real quick, so there's, that was the first section, was the park side, any questions about just what we do, is why we have those general lines and. And then it's kind of similar for rec, it's actually a little bit, it's a little bit more straightforward, we. Almost every single one of our programs has a specific line item and it's been every year we take the numbers. Um something really cool, I I want to just uh. Throw out there, where's the line, um so the softball line? We're, we'll probably, uh let's see, our budget is gonna go over for sure. Uh but we had to readjust because we need more money for that, because we started off with fourteen, not two teams, and three teams, or we get multiple, multiple teams. Um and baseball, softball, they're not cheap sports, but the good thing is that um. We have like the defensible evidence, if, you know, there's not a lot of question, it's just, you can show the numbers, but also like. Um the growth in that program and most of our programs that we ask for more money, it's it's kind of just like. When we're growing, it's hard not to get more money, but that means that we're receiving more rec, it's like I can breathe these down and be like. Look, we're we're trying to, you know, not make money back, we will never try to make money on a program. Uh we use sports and adult sports, we're subsidized. But we are at sitting at, you know, seventy percent, which is fantastic, sixty-five to seventy percent, a lot of these programs, which people are willing to pay for. That's a good amount, because other communities are sitting in the same amount, but they're, you know. Seventy-five to a hundred dollars more in some of these larger programs like softball or fifteen to twenty dollars more per person in adult volleyball, so we're still. Falling, looking at all the numbers locally, we're still falling below, but still allowing ourselves to be. Uh with the same subsidized range, um so we're not, you know, charging our customers too much, but not. Also not bringing in enough revenue to keep the programs running.
Yeah.
Yes, something to add?
No, I think it looks great, this is, this is, yeah, I'm so happy, this is the best it's looked in years, it looks amazing.
Our our team is just like in the last two years, three years, really taken off with this and it just, our whole budget process has just been. Tremendously flipped around um in the documents that we get to present and. You know, when when the budget is approved, you'll be, it's a public document, but we can also. You know, when when the budget is approved, you'll be, it's a public document, but we can also bring it in here and show you just, the whole document is fantastic. Kelly, totally, for the most part, in in our finance department, this won awards the last few years to G O. G O F, G F O C A, G F O.
I can't remember it, but it's a big deal.
Doesn't activate, we're like, putting together a budget that meets all sorts of criteria like. Giving the public as much transparency as possible, and there's e- even that, they come back and they're like, next year you need to do this. Next year you need to do this, so it's just like building upon that, making sure that. We're we're meeting the standards of what basically local Colorado government is asking. From the previous years, October and budgeting season is always a lot of work on staff and trustees and. A lot of, you know, work sessions, so I really appreciate your guys' work and everything you guys do. Um, and this capital project um, list here, a lot of it uh, came from like wish lists and. I know it's gonna be guided a lot by the master plan, but this, that doesn't take away from. What we've already worked on and some of the stuff we've heard from the community that maybe won't come out. But these are fun things to work on right here, the capital improvement stuff, and then when you see the proposal to the trustees, you can read the. The whole detailed project, it's really fun to see that that kind of work starts in place like this and with the community, so, I'm really. I love budgeting season, that's awesome.
I mean, even just having the master plan there, like, right, this is the group that really, really pushed that.
It it absolutely is.
That was one of those things that kept pushing year to year to year to year. Yeah, or this year.
Something like the ADA bridge at Box Elder, like, of course, we see we need it, but then you have a disc golf group that comes in. An ADA advocate and we're all sort of talking about that, it's like, okay, let's just, that's important for the community, starts here, right? And then it gets to the budgeting process, then eventually see a bridge and like. Yep, it happened here, right? Yeah, it's good stuff, um.
That's when we get to have the ribbon cuttings, all the good events, all the fun stuff, so, and we get to show the community what we work on and all, so.
Um, so so for next year, just for now, we, just to continue and always ten thousand dollars worth of soft trail, I think. Eventually that won't be a C I P, and we've been talking about things like that, just being turned into a new line in the general. In the general budget, it is good to track it here though, because it started here. Um, and it's good to see that it's. Every year ten thousand dollars, but I mean, that's kind of. Kind of similar with our operating budget, but this is very, it's very specific, I'm more like a rec budget anyways. Just things to tweak every year, right? So, uh, this year, just so you know, next week. We'll be using this ten thousand dollars worth of software replacement that you see uh. So through through the middle of the year and through now, we haven't spent any of it. That's because we wanna maximize that and not use a contractor to order, a contractor to lay it, um. Public Works has agreed to do the excavation and laying of it. And so we're gonna get a couple on ten thousand dollars worth of concrete out of it rather than. Uh, labor and concrete, so we're going to hopefully. Hopefully get all the way around from where we stopped last year around the dock, all the way around Wellville. To where it connects with the trail, so all the way around the west pond should now be asphalt. By two weeks from now, weather cooperates, they're gonna hopefully break ground on that next money. Even better for Arbor Day. Even better for Arbor Day, and then I guess the next goal would probably be to do the east pond. I don't think ten thousand gets that far, but again, that, you know, that's where we just say, if you wanna do the rest of that minor park improvement budget. That is a park improvement. Uh, and that's where it's kind of like balancing where that. Operations buzz it. Just trying to give you an idea. Uh, and the only other two things are just, we have to have a new small mower. And then um, we got uh, that U T B replacement last year for one of the two that are about ready to. Um, so the the next one will come in in the request to the board was something that's a little bit more versatile. That we can put hydraulic equipment on, we can put a broom on. Uh, the the general assumption and. I will call it a handshake agreement, just the general assumption right now is that the parks department will be maintaining um, the landscape. Down Cleveland Avenue once that project is done. Um, so having something with a broom on it to remove snow down there, because it'll be, we can concrete and we don't wanna put. Metal shovels and all that stuff out there or blades, uh, as well as clean the underpass and clear the underpass, so. Agricultural equipment can go on it, aerators, seeders, all that kind of stuff, so something a little bit more versatile for us. Uh, one thing I also requested and it was. Conditionally approved, uh, based on revenues is another parks technician. Knowing that we are going to one, um, we're trying to expand services through the weekends, we have a full time personnel, so it reduces costs for. Uh, costs and time for on-call as well as we have someone. At all events on the weekends, um, a parks person that can open, close, anybody that does a rental, then we know that we have someone in. Uh, on weekends. But also again, someone, an extra body, we need it already, but once downtown is done, there's. Thousands of plants and landscape and irrigation, so. That was uh, agreed that the board really liked the idea and the proposal of that, they're one hundred percent behind it. Second go around, we had to kind of move back on hiring in the first quarter, we're gonna look again at revenues and potentially hire. Um, in the third quarter, which means if we're approved in the second, after second quarter. Financials come out, then uh. If given the go by the board, and there are a couple other positions across the town too, not just ours, but uh. Then uh, we'll start the hiring process uh. End of second quarter, if we get the okay, well. Beginning of third quarter, most likely. Before snow, probably before Cleveland's fully up and running, so we'll get a person in going if it's approved. So those would be the big asks for the Parks and Rec Department this year.
Good stuff.
Another person to implement that master plan, put something down, let's go. They're the ones that hit the hard work done, that's for sure. That's kind of a little budget overview from Parks and Rec for twenty twenty six requests. I I think it goes. I just would go to adoption this first, maybe in November, we'll go back to the schedule though. Do you remember, is that right?
I think it's not the first one, but.
So that'd be another one, if you want to check and zoom in, um, it's. Good, it's been meaning to.
So far, we've had no public comment on budget stuff or any of the readings or working sessions or anything, so. We could take that as a. Everybody's cool, or we can say it's not very many people are engaged, it's probably a second one. Um, so if you guys have any input on any part of the budget, not just this part, we would happily hear it, um, we don't have anybody participating so far. So, I mean, we're doing our best based off of how we represent folks, but it's always nice to hear from people too, so.
Yes, and we did have a budget boomnanza last night in this room.
There was no one here?
Uh, we had, we had forty people come through, which is. A little bit less than we would have hoped, because we all had different stations and. Boards that are still up. We're ready to talk and listen. Where we're still in potential adjustment period, but nothing's been improved or set forth, so. Zero comments have just come from our two meetings.
Yeah, I guess there was a lot of interaction, boomnanza, so people had individual conversations, super chill, you could just talk to heads of every department. Um, but like in a formal meeting, no one's come with a comment or.
It's just like, what does this actually mean, just so we know.
Maybe it's kosher.
I know, right?
Like that good this year.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, I I mean. It's interesting to see, cause. You know, we proposed a buzzer, we all thought it was great, and come back a week later and revenues have changed and like, okay, let's slash a bunch of stuff, and there's still no questions, I'm like, why, this and that, it's like. We're here, we're here to let you know what we're doing. It it's funny, um, just being a little bit more candid when, when we're all sitting around at these budget meetings and and nobody does come in, we're kind of like. We're prepared, let's go, let's talk, like, this is our job, we wanna get file like, and then take it and then readjust if needed, or have the board have a conversation about. All of that, that's why we wanna, we wanna be here and do that. It's kind of like, not sitting on your hands, we're like, okay.
Yeah, like, let's. Resources of the entire town, like, all the leaders of every department, November eighteenth.
Do you think that some of that comes with just a very clear picture and like it, it feels maybe. More tran- like, I hate to say transparent, but but I think that maybe. Some of it can be attributed to the work that you all have done to like, really make it accessible and. Readable and understandable.
Every year, it's, the process has become so much smoother and much more transparent, and the materials that come out, come out with. I mean, we'll be at the. I don't know which reading this will be, this will be the second reading, cause we already looked at it, right, so. We, it's already been in front of the public like five times now, so it could be that, you know, people aren't. So skeptical, because it's been so readily available. Um, that could be it, but things, things keep changing, so it's not like the first reading or the first view of it is exactly what it is now, but. Um, I hope that's the case, and then unless there's any kind of big. Problem right in town, a lot of people don't. Show up, so, I guess that's a good thing too.
Why we do our job, we prepare and listen and. Scared to serve, we all feel the same way, I can, I can honestly speak for all the department ads. After. After the second reading, we're just kind of like. Okay, we made a lot of cuts. Cool, are we doing well? We don't know, we hope we are, but. Someone come yell at us, please.
Be careful what you ask.
Get into it. Well, I'm here, this is my opportunity, it takes suggestions from all of you as well. You know, again, it's not, it's not set in stone, um. At this point, it'd be hard to make adjustments because of the revenue, we've already done that to the slash and. Adding a bunch would be tough, but if there's anything glaring that you can think of or see that. Present.
I think the piece about amendments being, you know, an option as we move into next year and look at, you know, those, those quick. You know, we we get when you get, but nu- different numbers, you know, we roll into next year, it's like, well, this looks. Like there might be some ability to make some differences there, and we can look at a parks master plan and what's been laid out. Or even things like this, you know, it's like, let's, let's make sure that we stay on top of that information. So we can make changes or request changes if we need to.
Yeah, I don't wanna wait till twenty twenty seven to start anything, or even start considering something, so. I I I'm totally backing that up, and I'll definitely bring that up again too. Uh, for softball, that's growing, we gotta play at some amazing complexes. And they all had so many trees and shade and like. It was really cool, so if anything I would recommend for larger projects, it's just to get. So many trees, like, it would be really cool to be like, we need way more trees and make that a large project to just make us. Full of trees, that's something, uh, those fields were gorgeous and comfortable, we had to hang out there all day long for four games in a row one time. And it was like just beautiful, and it was nice, so I think that makes a big difference for the experience people come, and like. Only one of those teams out of fifteen that were playing there that day belonged to that town. So that was how many visitors were there experiencing that as well, so. Just to think of, and then we went out to restaurants and we did all the thing, we spent the entire day there, so. As we're, and we hosted as well, um, but we don't have the four fields, but. I think if we made our field something like super special and comfortable, that we'd probably get a lot more business like that and get more people visiting Wellington, so. Anything I would recommend for a new bigger project is ring on the trees. The Longmont Complex was amazing.
That that sound eats you alive. It eats you alive.
Right.
You're gonna start hosting tournaments and stuff like that too. And see, when I was a coach for travel baseball team, some of the complexes are just. Outstanding, and some of them are more bare, where you just walk up and you're, you leave after, you know, a long day and half your face is red. The other half is just still pale white, the the springtime is just eats you up. So definitely stuff like that, and you can build in artwork and playgrounds all around trees, and you know, there's really cool parks out there based around. And then you can, you know. Arbor Day Jamboree. Twenty years down the road, when you have these massive trail connections and you have all these wonderful parks. It brings a lot of people to town, you talk about revenue, making more money for parks and stuff.
Absolutely. I guess the last or.
That was on there.
Last thing I wanna discuss, budget wise. Should go back up, it's um. Just something that, you know, as we were talking about potentially. I didn't do the revenue and programs that, you know, we have succeeding programs, and then we have other programs that. Really are um. Not very good revenue generators versus how much we put into a program or one of those. And I have to make, uh, you know, uh, in my position, I have to look at this every year. Uh, year over year, um, the batting cages just cost a lot of money to operate. Um, it's not, you know.
I killed that three years ago.
It's, yeah, it's, you know, it's not up to me to decide what exactly to do, all I do, all I can do is present some numbers. Um, so it was requested that I did that, um. For the board and, well, we we have um. Eleven thousand dollars in batting cage maintenance, that's like a very small portion. Uh, of what that is, uh, as far as a program. You know, it it costs us upwards of. I think staffing was about, I remember at like nine thousand dollars just for seasonal staff wages for that. Uh, we estimated time for hiring, training, um, full time staff. Maintaining the batting cages just on a day to day basis outside the contracted maintenance that's necessary for the safety of the cages and bringing that up and. Making adjustments to the pitching and the, and the tracks and all that kind of stuff. We estimated another three thousand dollars, and that's just, those are the soft costs of like human resources and. You know, all the staff internally. Um, and then we've also just looked into a lot of different things, the deferred maintenance there and. Kind of put a schedule together that says over the next five years, at the most five years. Was about a hundred and thirty-ish, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of deferred maintenance of the cages. Annually, without, without that. Annually, um, w- we subsidize that program from the park fund at. Let's just put it at ninety percent, it's like eighty-seven, earlier I was talking about sixty to seventy. And that, we would subsidize up to eighty if it's like a super successful program. That means, you know, the Parks Fund is funding eighty percent of the program and the revenue that we're getting is twenty, this is ten percent. That the tokens are giving back. And the Parks Fund is subsidizing all of, all of the different elements, ten percent or ninety percent of that, basically. So the revenue is just about like thirty-nine hundred dollars a year over the last five years, and I think our expenditures are. You know, I smell more. So it's, it's something to look at, um, the other, their 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 thoughts moving forward, like there's ways that we can adjust it. There's ways that we can change it, um, you know, it's. Well.
Might keep it alive?
I I'll take the directive, I just have to present options, right, um, there's an option to potentially do.
Sorry, that time we did this three years ago, and I don't know who's ever decided to keep this thing going, it's like.
It's, um, well, people are very passionate about it, the community, and it is, it is one of the few amenities that we have for youth. Uh, it is right now only open five months out of the year, and that's six months at the most. Directly attributed to the staff that we can get, you know, not, it's, it's a very first time job to maintain the batting cages. And the staff usually come from. And the staff usually come from, um. You know, their high school age, most of them that wanna take that job, so it's. People that wanna work just right before summer, in the summer, and then a little bit after. Um, so it's only open, so we're subsidizing a program for a very short amount of time. Or a confined amount of the population, um, it's just something, something that needs to be looked at, and if it. We want us to keep it open, there are options to make it more viable, but it's just gonna take money. Put into it, like automated machines, stuff like that. But we have, we have a full breakdown.
What is the purpose for keeping it? Do we have to keep it?
Someone's friend donated the stuff, it feels sentimental, that's, that's basically it.
I mean, people use it, I mean, I think that. I mean, my family goes and uses it, not often enough to like keep it open, but you know, occasionally my husband will take. My kid, especially after he played baseball, I, you know, I think that. It, there, we need to have more feedback too, I don't think we can just make a decision without it, you know, it being a conversation. With our, within our community too.
How many trees can you buy for tw- twelve thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars?
I mean, I think it's, uh, it's, it's something that, I think, like you said, like you run the numbers, we keep an eye on it, we continue to have conversations, maybe. We can host hitting clinics or something, you know, like maybe there are some things that we can do to, to utilize it, and maybe not, and if not, then. It's something to keep an eye on, I don't think it's, you know, we're not in a place to make a decision about it right now to say, nope, shut it down, right?
So, and I'm going, this is the fourth year in a row, I've heard the same conversation about the batting.
Yeah, it's like. It is, it is, like I said, it was, was asked for me to present just numbers to, to the board, so it's at a trustee level, they've heard. They've heard some information, they, they, um, I will say that it's backed, because it is one of the very few. Public resources we have for kids, there's always like this black bat.
Sure.
With batting cages for something outside of just a playground. Or a specific sports program, you know, and, and if that's not your go-to. And what else are we actually amenitized to offer?
Right.
Better off doing a batting clinic. Through the rec center and renting a machine and taking it to the ball field and being like, this weekend we're doing batting. You know?
Yeah, or, or just put up a net, one of the net ones, not with, no pitching machine whatsoever, just put up.
Just like.
The alley nets, the people come pitch to each other and hit. Or scrape it and put a pickleball pavilion, you know, like.
Or canopy shade, more shade.
Butt butt course.
All of these things have been. Various people to me and other people over the past three or four years that I've.
Yeah, but talking about the deferred ma- maintenance over the next few years of significant dollars.
And that's just deferred maintenance, right, so there, there's like three, three huge categories that go into it, it's just like the annual operating costs. Soft and hard costs. Then there's the deferred maintenance. Uh, why didn't, like five thousand dollars a year for electricity too? Um, and then we also have just like the things that you don't think about so much. Bats are like even cheap bats are like a hundred and fifty dollars new, now we try to recycle them through our baseball programs, but they don't always end up like that, right? Helmets with cages, because those are not required, but. At batting cages these days, the balls, the tracks, the belts that, you know, all that kind of stuff that goes into. Not necessarily deferred, I mean, we're looking at. Like the numbers are, they get pretty heavy over the next five to ten years of what we would spend on that day. And not just keep it open, but keep it open, running and safe. So it would be an investment, but an investment that like. If we were to, we would put the right things in place, like the automated machines, like they could be open year round. Um, unless those are for weathers.
Put it in the rec center when that gets built.
Yeah, no, I don't think many people.
I, I know people who have, who have complained about the lack of like just ability to go based on manpower. So, I mean, we just have to, we have to look at all sides, I don't think it's, I, I think it's a huge cost. And it's not something that I like super passionate about keeping, I just think that we need to look at. All sides of it, too.
I'd like to side with that idea, it's just not be closed up where we're just making decisions without opening up a discussion with community.
Didn't we try to get people to take it at the high school, I mean, I, I feel like this has been like a four-year conversation, that no one's done anything.
Well.
Except to get to the town.
I also, I also stay on the idea of, I'd like to provide more amenities to people and not take things away, and I feel like taking the batting cages out. I've used it with my kids, I do see kids over there, my mom leaves it publicly, I do see them getting used. I agree, the availability, I wish was better, I wish it was open more, the automated system would help with that. I just, and I think, Laurel, then you could correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that donated by, um, the Marsh, Brad Marsh?
Yeah, they, I, I can't remember who it was, yeah, it was donated and, and just the maintenance has just become too much, and that was. You know, that was over about fifteen, yeah, years ago, whatever, so, we have been talking about this a long time, about movies, or, yeah, taking it down.
But again, maybe it's something we watch, and, and we do find a way to open discussion. Maybe put something with a QR code at the batting cages and ask people, how much do you use this, how much are you investing?
We know how much they use.
But I mean, is it. Is it a variety of people going, or is it the same set group of different people, you know? That's where I wanna know the numbers, is, is, do you wanna know, I can give you some numbers.
I would say, do they have, do they have to sign waivers and stuff to use it? Yeah, so you know, if it's the same people too. They have to sign a waiver every time they use it, or is it like the? Yeah, if you have the system.
I can give you.
This might be a great opportunity for the master.
Mm-hmm.
Plan, because, cause you're gonna see there, like, what are the major amenities that are wanted and needed? And then maybe that might be a time to weigh it and say, this or that, this or that, you know? What's gonna serve more people, what makes more sense financially?
I guess that's, I, I could go with that, see where it lands on the, uh.
Yeah.
I think that's a good time to do it, and then it also gives us like some ideas of, hey, are people feeling like this is another amenity? Is of more concern to them, well, maybe that thing gives us some ideas about what we can do with that space, I mean, I, we're doing the Parks Master Plan for a reason, so. You know, w- we, we consider evaluating all of that when we have s- some more direct guidance on feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's the facility in Fort Collins, and they got a whole entire baseball, like it's got. I think it does tennis, baseball, football, uh. Softball, like a whole.
Crown has a, a pretty large.
Yeah.
The grinders here in town have batting cages, though, I don't know how much they're.
Yeah, athletic grind.
Yeah, uh, yeah, athletic.
Mm-hmm, that was the other thing I was gonna say, is like, we have that, that group and we have a pretty strong, like you. Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, over by Little Monsters, so, but it, it's something like if we're, if we wanna talk about what, how it's used or. Ways to connect the community to it, we have those connections now, you know, we have. That's a no-pro grinder team that is.
Yeah.
So.
So, so in twenty twenty-five, which we're already through the period. The batting cages being closed, um, there are a total of three hundred and eighty purchases. And the average purchase was seven dollars and sixty-five cents. So.
When I went, I got ten, I did ten myself, the one time I went.
Ten dollars, yeah, and, and it's really hard, it's hard to figure out exactly how many people that's. Fully there, because if you buy ten dollars, you get a, an extra token, I think. And then you have your ten toe, or you get five tokens, you get a six for free, so for ten dollars. You know, you and two friends can split the six tokens however you would like to, so that. That expands how many people are using it, that doesn't tell you exactly, each token's two dollars to get their pitches.
Yeah.
Uh, but that just tells you how many s- strict purchases were made.
Oh.
Were the three hundred, what was it, three hundred and eighty in twenty twenty-five.
Three eighty or two eighty?
Three eighty.
So right now you're looking at. Ten thousand dollars making the next five years versus a hundred and thirty-five thousand to keep it going.
Yeah.
It's, it's kinda tough.
Seems like a, a rock and a hard place, you know, cause someone donated it, you don't wanna take amenities away. But if it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense, and then at the same time, too, it's.
It was a donation. Yeah. Yeah, it's just my job to present numbers, and when I see something glaring like that, of year over year, I have to just. So it's, it, it.
I think we have to, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
United Resources, right, we need to make what's best for the community and let the community decide what. This, this discussion, um, I just wanted to have this because, again, it was requested and. Well, brought up in budget discussion by myself. To our team, it got elevated in conversation to the trustees, asked for me to present there or, or discussions to be had there. And then, um, there's a chance it's coming back to the board for them to say like, how, how they feel about the discrepancy of. And how each one of them feels, and they might, they might go to vote there, whether. Um. There's some sort of a change, because this is budget season, so if they find something at the trustee level that they like or don't like, or. You know, it, it might get there, so.
So you're saying this might be a discussion at a trustee meeting prior to the budget approval?
It's already been brought up, so.
Okay.
Can we vote on getting rid of it?
Well, I mean, that's what's great about having a liaison. That's why I wanted to have this conversation.
Recommendation, I could take that as a clear recommendation, I don't know.
Gone anywhere except right here. Four years that I know about it. It's been the same exact thing, and. We've tried different avenues, that having people take it, the high school, the this, the that. It's a loser, I'm sorry, this doesn't help, sorry.
John, I'll let you handle if you wanna, you guys wanna make that formal or what you wanna do.
I know he's sentimental to it.
I know, it's a really, it is a sentimental thing.
But I've been, we've given enough tries.
I would say that if we decide to make a decision, we didn't make an amendment to the. Agenda, this is a discussion item at the moment, um, so I would need a recommendation for another amendment, and I believe we can do that at any time, we don't need to do it at the beginning of the meeting. I would need a second for that, and then, um, we need a majority. Um, to progress with the boat. And then this would be a recommendation from this board to the trustees. It wouldn't be, we're all saying, we don't make those decisions, we make recommendations.
Yeah, we make recommendations.
So I'm always open for, um. Any kind of amendment you guys wanna make or vote, um, that is not my place, I'm just gonna tell you how it works. Um. But yeah, I mean, Laurel, do you have anything on this?
We can't hear you if you're talking.
I know, right?
And it was even brought up during the trustee meeting.
Have to hop off, she texted me minutes ago. Happy with everything. The math is perfect.
I'm not comfortable voting on it, right, per- personally.
I feel the same way.
I couldn't say right now if we're gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote.
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't have the community's engagement. I know it's money that we're spending, but we have other amenities that we don't make a single penny back on, and we're still investing in those, and we're still. Providing amenities to other people, so I'm not comfortable with it, but I'm not the all saying here, this is our board. And you guys are more than open to make any kind of recommendations and take votes on subjects, you just, we just do it the right way, we make an amendment to the agenda. If that gets approved, then we make a motion for a vote on a subject, and then that either gets approved or denied, and then that's how we move forward, recommending the trustees.
Yeah, and if you guys are concerned about people telling you how they feel about it. I wouldn't vote down, I would put it on a future agenda, so that people know and it's. Like communicated, we're going to be talking about the viability of the batting cages on this meeting in the future, so if you feel. Passionate about this, or do you wanna come, or you wanna send in remarks in advance? Then they have the opportunity to do that, and then that way you've notified everyone that that conversation is even gonna happen? Cause this is just part of something that came out of a budget conversation, but if you guys wanna notify people to do that kind of conversation in the future, that would be how I see it.
This is what's. A little bit tricky about budget season, right, this conversation came up in between our meetings and then it got. Proliferated quickly, so it's like, this is the only opportunity I have to come to you before I go to the board for their discussion further on, and so. Um.
I think that's my first thing when I saw it on a deal, like, that thing's still up there, I was here five minutes, I'm like, that thing's still.
Well, we are, we are shutting down for winter now, yeah, so we're not incurring any more costs for the rest of the year. Uh, yeah, we have, they have to be officially closed, so the machines have to be.
Nets rook.
Yeah, all that kinda stuff, okay, so. But we're not doing anything major at the moment, we're no, taking the nets down, recovering the machines.
And we're, we're doing all the winterization, which is a contractor doing that, because.
I mean, I think, I think, like you said, it's, it's a concern, I definitely hate to see us losing, like, putting that money into that feature. When we're not seeing anything from it, I think, you know, I'm, I'm also new, so like. I haven't had this discussion enough to feel comfortable voting on it yet, and I, I just think if the trustees decide to make that decision, then that's kinda out of our hands. And, and if they feel, feel like that's the right thing, then that's. That's the decision, I want us to have a little more discussion before, on it, before I feel comfortable voting.
And I was like.
How I feel.
I like to honestly wait until maybe we even open them again next year, where we can actually put something up. Where the people that are using it know that we're gonna have a discussion about it, because we put these out every month. And we don't get anybody.
Yeah.
They don't even know these meetings exist sometimes, but when we're engaging with the people that are actually using the facilities. And maybe we should do that more often, you know, we're talking about viewpoint. We got viewpoint on that list, we go put something out at viewpoint, hey, this is the day we're gonna be discussing it, this is your. Community park, this is where you go.
Great idea.
And then they, they know we're gonna be talking about it, they come in and give ideas. I think this item kinda falls in that list.
I mean, the only way to really get people invite, involved is to get them all ticked off and.
Yeah.
I think it also gives us the time to work through Park Master Plan.
Yeah.
And, and see kind of where that leads, and it's a bigger, it's a bigger discussion there.
So, so at the next trustee meeting, when it does come up, it's gonna be presented in. In a format just as, as far as like budget updates, and a couple other discussions that are similar that have been talked about. But that actually need to be like straw poll voted on or whatever by the board trustees, um. If, I, I don't believe I'm. Gonna need to speak on it, cause I already kind of put the numbers out there, um. I will be on the Zoom call, and if they need to ask me any questions, I will be there. I'm more than happy to just say that we had a very good discussion about this. And in general, it's kind of up in the air, and they want public, you guys all want public feedback, you wanna see what the master plan is. But you also understand the constraints that it's putting on budgetary constraints, so, um.
Yeah.
In, in general, or if you want, because it's gonna come to discussion, right, I don't know, if you wanna say anything about Prost or you want me to.
Yeah, I'll bring it up if it's, but, the only thing I just wanna warn you guys, this has already been highlighted, it's already kind of been targeted, so. If a decision's made relating to this budgetary item. It could happen prior to any recommendations that you guys make, just because it's already been like broadcasted, right?
When is that reading?
Eighteenth.
The eighteen?
Yeah, so I, I just, right, and you guys can send in emails.
I think it's.
Oh, the, the net first reading? I mean, that, the vote will probably be on the eighteenth, but, I mean, like, uh, future calendars. But, uh.
It's gonna be awesome, it's gonna be like a big rival, keepers and against.
What is it like? Which brew boil or whatever?
When you look at it, what we did with the sign.
There is an update scheduled for the twenty. So it looks like it's gonna be a presentation, so no voting or anything, but that means. But, keep in mind too, if you wanna make comment on the budget and you can't make a meeting, you can do that anytime through, uh, the contact the board on the website. And it goes to everybody on the board and, and administration, so if you guys have. Or you hear anybody who feels passionate or sentimental, or wherever that it might be, have them do that if they can or something, and then that will reach everyone too.
You know, I'll update our team on this discussion, I'm really glad that we had it, I'm. Super thankful for everybody like working through the process and. If we can, these are the big things, when it gets to budgets, like. Some, some months, I feel like, it's like, okay, here we go, we're doing something, when it comes to this, it's like, yeah, there's some real stuff to talk about.
I know, I re- yeah, I was, you know, views, we were fighting, trying to get more, the sixty-five hunt, oh, yeah, so then we. The same thing, we've been, you know, in different ways.
Can we do a little research and figure out where those were, were donated from? Is there, that's gotta be somewhere.
I think Laurel and know, or she has it.
I believe it was Brad Marsh, the previous, uh.
Lawyer?
Town attorney, so. I could be wrong, but I, I know that was thrown out there before, so.
I feel like I've heard that before.
If we can get an answer to that, though, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to reach out and just inform them of the situation, maybe. And just inform them of the situation, maybe there's something moving forward, they'd really love keeping a little. Uh WCP turns in ten years this year.
Maybe they're at the beginning probably.
Which is, which is why I kinda put that capital outlay just for that or um. That's not really a model, it's more just. They have been there since twenty fifteen.
Yeah, that's absolutely. And they're, I don't know if they were used beforehand or. You know, like I'm just.
Yeah.
It doesn't have, there's a lot of.
I just, I don't want anybody to be really upset if there is a decision that's made on it just from a budgetary standpoint, so. I'll bring what I heard here if it does come up.
Having worked for cities and and counties and stuff, the the one thing that bothers me about the idea of taking them out is I know the what the protocol is for getting rid of them. And it is just absolutely smash them. Cause it giving them away is like a gift that the town is giving somebody, and they can't sell them, because it's a safety protocol. I've been at cities that have done it. You might be able to scrap it. And maybe it might be different here, but every city and county I've ever worked for, we'd get rid of things and it was taken in the back to smash. You can't repurpose it, cause it's. For whatever reason.
Liability of.
Liability.
Always.
And if we're looking at getting rid of it, cause budgetary item, I don't really think there's gonna be too many people that are gonna take them all.
No.
Where they know that they're gonna be spending the money that we don't want to spend.
Right.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else on the budget?
Thank you for all the work that you and staff have done on it and. Making it beautiful and easy to read and easy to understand, that goes a long way.
I would just, you know, anytime you can, even if you're just listening or assuming this is the time of year. To listen to the trustee meetings and. What everybody's really trying to accomplish. Okay, the post meeting is back in order for a short recess. And we will move on to parks and trails map. Sort of feedback. One page is upside down. Scroll through it all, but that's basically how it'll fold.
You didn't print it and bring it to us so we could see it?
Well, it's not in print version yet. But just uh looking for. Um necessarily a vote, but just approval of it. I hope everybody have a chance to look at it. So loved your suggestion, Joe, about the lining of where. Uh the roads that have bike lanes are. What my suggestion was when we started looking at this again is it's gonna be hard to do on this because streets is still going through. So this won't be updated every other week that they're doing there when they have time here and there, but we can hopefully. Updated on the digital version. So every time something's updated, we'll be able to update the website, so the QR code will take to the most updated, but this is just the general of what we have. And then if we do like new sections of trail. And we update this, then we'll add what we have at that point to it, or what hopefully at that point will be kind of more complete. Does that make sense? Well, I, we all love that suggestion, everybody in town like that, but. It's a fantastic way to show that we do have a little bit more, but it's kind of hard on. How quickly they update, what they get to, and we can talk to them, and then they go and do other things and get back, you know, painting isn't just like. During the summer, they're doing that, so. You know, we we got all these on here that not all of them are ours, like this isn't our trail, but it is a multi-use trail, and we have worked with. The HOA to have that put in, they kinda came and presented in front of the board, they maintained that piece of the trail, but we do consider that a town amenity. So again, as that expand expands and as we expand into the new area to the south where that development is, this this will all expand. Um you know, when Darren came in and said that they're most likely gonna maintain those trails, cause it's inside the HOA. We'll also add that, even though it won't be something that um town staff takes care of. Whatever little parks they have, all that kinda stuff, we'll continue to add. Um but we'll, as green spaces, but we won't note them as town parks. I think it's. Be in hand pretty darn soon.
Yeah. The only thing and. You know, we talked about like the neighborhood down to the south that Darren's developing, like Sage Meadows has the trail. Which you show, kind of like right down from viewpoint. But there's also a park in in green space inside of Sage Meadows. So as you expand, will you include that or will you not because it's not on the trail system?
We can talk about that next time it's updated, uh whether we think that that's a viable way to go, because it's gonna be the same thing for. Saddleback too, right? Because they came in front of us and. They'll have their little HOA park, we won't maintain it, but we obviously do the suggestions for them based on our. Um or recommendations for them. So we can talk about that at the next update for sure.
I mean, I'm not sure that all the people in Sage Meadows want it on the map, but you know, just as you start to talk about expanding south, it just made me curious.
I think it would be cool to have dog, a dog icon or dog parks, just because there's only two, and I think that would be a good indication.
Your icon, so just under the amenity.
Yeah, like a little dog, right there. Cause you could put that right where it is, so some people would, all they care about is that, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, so you can get that updated. Thought that would have to be a.
Fun line thing.
It's beautiful.
So excited.
Yeah.
I like the connectedness between that too and what you sent separately for the rec guide. And the sponsorships, like you can tell that the view of things is very concrete and. Consistent, and I think that that goes a long way too, when people are looking at information.
Yeah, trying to get things more succinct.
That's great.
I just wanna, we have certain things that we put up there, but I'm so proud, like at every one of our events, like come take a map.
Does it, I can't remember, I looked at it earlier, but does it have a spot where you can link to the online? Like a QR code or something that pulls it up online?
You're somewhere.
Cause that would be the only thing, like for me, if I'm like, well, I'm not really like a, I'm just gonna take that, I'll put it in the trash, like do you. For the QR code, I can just link. Yeah.
Parks and Recreation, yep.
That only goes to our page.
Yeah.
That's the registration.
I'm sure you'll update the website, tap it like as a.
Awesome. That looks great.
Been a long time coming.
Yeah, well, you can submit that to the county and then say, hey, here's Wellington that you guys forgot to put on the county records.
Pretty funny, it's like the. Point two five, forty-five miles, like.
One is like ten miles.
It's pretty awesome.
Gives us room to grow in ten years, we can look back at that and be like, wow, that looks like now.
Yeah.
It's a perfect ten K from my house up through the entire park system, like through town to Wellville and back.
It's great.
It's perfect.
That's awesome.
That's great. I'm I'm saying, you could have a, you you could have a five K slash ten K right through the parks. Talks about it so much.
Arbor Day.
We might have to be the biggest.
You would just were voluntold.
Excellent. I really like it. I'm glad to get this checked off the list too. Started seeing them when people saw us. When Lauryn texts, I'm surprised she said, didn't say like, I love the map, and then like. Finally. Five years too late.
She said it, she just didn't text it.
Well, if nobody else had anything else about the parks and trail map. Move to WCP Memorial Gardens budget discussion. The biggest thing I wanna say there is to kind of let it. It it kinda slowed down a little bit, right? Momento. And it's always on this, so just wanna reinvest into how we can keep pushing it forward, just. Thoughts, ideas, moving into, uh it's budget season now, we know we didn't get the grant. You know, we don't have, like, it's not scheduled as a CIP project, so. You know, we, if we want this to get off the ground, we need to wholeheartedly put. A lot of effort moving into the new year. We talked about just having a special meeting only on that, so. So, I didn't mean budget as far as like our parks and rec operating or capital budget, just like. How are we gonna get to end goal to kind of. Leave it and go, and I know this isn't the place for the discussion, but just to reinvest in the idea that we're getting towards the end of the year. Programming's indoors, there's a little bit more time. I'm not saying I have a ton of more time, but there's time for staff to invest in these larger projects and thoughts. Moving forward, this is the time to do it. So we want to have like a strict, how are we gonna get this done meeting? I think it's time to set that on the calendar and either do a special meeting or just say. That's the December meeting, that's all we're talking about, and then we'll do our. Our retreat in January and get everything set for the new year.
How much do we have on our November agenda?
That's the next question. We have a site visit to WCP.
We're not gonna get to both of those parks in the dark.
Once we start there.
Well, even if we start there, it's still, it's getting dark already at seven. Usually it's dark at five. By the time we get into that time of year. I I don't wanna wait until December personally, um I think it needs to be our agenda item in November, because to me. If we wanna get it up and running, then we need to hit the ground running with it. In January, and twenty twenty-six needs to be the focus on. Our big undertaking, other than the Parks Master Plan, has to be that. I think getting the, not getting the grant is a huge blow, but that's what happens when you apply for a grant. I know that one of the things that you said is that we could do um. We can apply quarterly, right? It comes up again?
Things biannually.
Biannually, okay, so uh my feeling on this is, and and obviously, you know, Friends of Wellington wants to help as much as possible with this, but. When. When we met and talked about fundraising for this, the town had gone ahead and developed. Donation tiers for the project, and so my feeling is, if that's, if we can do it that way. And Friends of Wellington can support that venture, then that's how we need to be moving. It does not, it it cannot be a full expectation on Friends of Wellington. To be the full push behind raising sixty-two thousand dollars, it just cannot. I I mean, it's. We work full-time, we have young kids, like it it cannot be on a group of three or four of us to to do all of that, so. If the town has taken the time and you guys have taken the time to put together those donation tiers, then as a pros group, we need to sit down and talk about how we. How we do that, like what, how do we roll this out? Where do we put our focus? How do we reach our community? What are the conversations? What events are we hosting there? How are we getting the word out? We need a real plan headed into next year. On this being the focus, because we can't continue to sit and talk and talk and hash around like we did for four months with the name of them of the garden. We've gotta hit the ground running, and we need to be committed to making that our priority. That's, those are my feelings on it.
I agree, I agree. I think we've lost momentum. I think the grant, you know, not getting that was. That sort of halted almost everything, and I am also. Not feeling, although I don't know that we've tapped, you know, the Legion lately, like I don't know what the interest is at this point. Like I think we need to have an understanding of where people's minds are, is this still where we wanna invest? And if so, that's great, but we haven't, I haven't heard that recently, so I feel like. We just need to know, is this what the community wants us to push forward? I don't feel like we know that right now. Again, we knew it six months ago, a year ago, but. So, yeah, I feel like it's just stalled.
It's stalled. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
I'm glad, I I it's time to revisit it after the craziness of everything else. I also think that it gives us a. It's kind of given us a chance to pause a little bit for for me from a personal aspect and say like. Okay, yeah, I was really passionate about moving this forward, but. It's not fair to want to to do that and not make sure that we're connected with other. Focuses like our veterans in our community, and and to me, that is where we need to start this process again as a fresh. To make sure that we are all still on the same page, and we're working together and we're focusing on driving this project forward. Um because I think it's really easy sometimes, and I think we can acknowledge that. There was some miscommunication, you know, when we started Friends of Wellington and and not being connected enough with the Legion to make sure that we were all. Moving forward and and supporting one another in that direction, so I wanna make sure that when we do it this time, we do it the right way. And and we we work really unitedly towards. Getting us at least phase one of this project going. And so to me, it it, I don't want it to just be pros talking about this in our next meeting. It almost feels like we need. Some time with our, with the Legion and and other veterans in our community, if that's something you guys feel strongly about, I don't wanna dictate that. You know, I tend to be a bull in a china shop, so. Uh you know, it's a good time, chance for me to step back and say like, what is it that we we need to be doing and hearing from you all?
We all have the same issue. Our pockets are empty. I wish we had a big bank account, just write you a check, see? Knock it out, but we're in the same boat, you guys are. And you guys are doing your, your final, the big project. It's supposed to lay out what you're gonna be spending money on. Is there anything I'm gonna put that? When you go to the board, once you get your master plan done. I'm thinking, I mean, that's kinda what happened, hang on, the master plan finally gets done, and then you can put your budget forward. Say, okay, we want twenty thousand dollars this year for this park. I don't know if that's in works, that that's your plans. But where does the money come from is the hardest part.
That goes into like the the earlier question on the budget of that sixty-five for minor improvements, if you could use that for a. One-time expenditure type thing, that basically wipes out the entire. Project right there.
Originally, it was, these as a grassroots fundraising project, town was not going to fund it.
Well, looking at the future calendar, since we are talking about it, and that November meeting really just being the visits that we were planning on doing. But again, with lighting issue at that time of year. If we were to do one, my suggestion would be just to meet outside here and talk about library part. And do at least that one, because we didn't get a chance to do some of the ones we really wanted to do before we got to the semi-year. And then we just set that, the memorial guard, the veterans guard as our agenda for that meeting. And we come back with the paper on the tiers, every idea that you can muster up, any kind of context that you think we could make with different people. Um and then we talk about grants, and we talk about reapplying for the one that we didn't get, the T bowl one, and then. Anything else that we can come up with between now and next meeting, we just sit here and we really get back on schedule and maybe some kind of. I don't know, we come up with something, we we at least. I don't know, we come up with something, we we at least get it back being fresh again.
Mm hmm.
Because I know what you're saying, it it, when we didn't get that grant, it was like we hit a wall.
Yeah.
And now we just need to figure out moving forward, how to get around that and how to. Reach the community. And again, like, is this something we should be doing? What does everybody want, you know?
Yeah.
And readdress this whole idea and and how we get going for it, cuz I wanna see it happen. Uh, we made it happen. So we just set that for our November meeting, a regular meeting.
Is that something that any other Legion folks would be interested in attending so that we can have that conversation? I I can.
What do we call it? Work session?
That's what I was gonna ask too.
I'll figure out how to facilitate it, yes.
This meeting will need to change dates because the trustee meeting is now on that date, so.
Yeah, yeah, good call. It's gonna have to be the thirteenth on the Wednesday if we wanna do it. That day.
Thirteenth Thursday, if you guys wanna have in any kind of input associated with that with the. Budget, I'd maybe go the week earlier. I don't know what works for you guys, but twelfth is gonna be the board trustees meeting.
I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to moving into the fifth. Other people can do that.
I don't know. It's a Wednesday, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I can do that.
I can do that as well.
Well, that could.
I think that might be what we give ignite.
Hmm.
See, we can change it up.
But if you, okay, yeah, we don't wanna take away from that, but it might, would it also work? What time do you guys usually meet?
Mm hmm.
So if you guys can meet for thirty, forty minutes, can you come over here? Because that'll give us time to talk about the park and maybe gather ourselves.
Yeah.
And then we can do.
About your vision.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. I think that to me, that's, that's the biggest thing that we need is just that collaboration right from the beginning. I I don't think. If I can look at it objectively, I think the break and the breather was also needed. Because I felt like we just kept spinning our wheels and it was like, we have to push this forward, but we don't really know. How to do that. And so I don't think that a pause was a bad thing if it allows us to reevaluate and and approach it more cohesively.
Dream work makes, dream work makes a dream work.
Dream work makes the teamwork too.
Yeah, there you go. So November fit?
Yes. Yeah. You guys can be here at six thirty, six forty five.
Yeah. Let me just make sure that this room is up still.
It stinks that we're so close to Veterans Day because I I'd really like to target that. Date, but it just, it's not gonna.
It's gonna be too close.
This room is.
Friends of Wellington.
I just mean in general. I think that, you know, we have a lot of veterans in our community who are not part of the Legion. Um, and I think that uh, Veterans Day pulls a lot of veterans, not just from our community, but from Northern Colorado. Wellington has started to really put together a pretty impressive Veterans Day and. I think we're missing an opportunity there a little bit. Um, but I also don't wanna try and push something out. I mean, I I'm maxed. There's no way right now I can try and turn around and and organize something in the next two and a half weeks. Um, and so, but I think it gives us a, hopefully, cuz we're meeting before Veterans Day, so if we meet the fifth. It'll at least give us some conversation, talking points and hopefully things that we can then begin as we're in the community on Veterans Day. Talking with veterans and say, hey, this is something we really are.
Yeah.
Pushing forward, you know, this is, keep an eye out on this or, you know, can't hold mailing list or whatever it might be. We need to utilize our time in the community on that day to connect. As much as we possibly can.
Yeah, the this side is open. There will be an H O A meeting over there, but. They can absolutely still. Be here. It's a Buffalo Creek stage role. I'm supposed to go to that.
I need to be in though.
Are you on the board?
No, I uh, I have grapes. My mom knows that. Remember when she put in for jellyfish lighting? They're like no show lighting, it's all of those underneath the.
They have to be, we have it.
And they denied her and I'm like, you should just put her in.
They were.
They won't give her a reason why and I asked them to state their uh. Convenance or anything that would uh, prevent that. And I know they would come up with the holiday lighting, but.
I need you on my team then.
Yeah, yeah. Single.
I live in Buffalo Creek.
Hmm, single. Yeah. I'm looking at this.
Oh, that's it.
I'm seeing all runs the H O A management committees. I also have twenty four on top of your uh, future calendar. Twenty twenty four.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
What year are you living in?
Okay. So we will dedicate November for that. I think that will be really good and that will be for town with their greatest ideas. On fundraising and anything that you would love to discuss, if we will spend all meeting on that, so.
If I were to try and throw something together for Veterans Day. Like to pay you back, well, but like that some of the businesses in town would. You guys be open to them. It's like. With the.
What is our purpose? Uh, what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, it would be the original would be for the the garden.
To do an actual fundraiser or to just raise awareness? Like, what are we trying to do?
Could be both. Or do you wanna pick one or the other? Do you think one's a better idea?
I I don't think we're in a place to fundraise on it with three weeks' notice.
Right.
Honestly, um.
Uh, I would say if I have the chance to get, you kind of stuff with like the town's Q R code, which is just donation page.
I I think a lot of it comes down to why are we passionate about this? Why, why is this something that we feel is really important for our community, that our veterans feel is important? Um, to me, so much of it is. Getting the information out there. I mean, again and again and again, you cannot fundraise until people hear about it and are excited about it and know that it's happening and. That to me, if we're gonna talk to people on Veterans Day, that's what it's about. Look, this is something we're passionate about. This is something that our veterans and our community feels really important. This is something that feels important to me as a wife of a veteran, like that. That, those are the conversations we need to be having. And the understanding of the location and what needs to be accomplished. I mean, I I I don't think.
The uh, boards or any of the stuff get put out at the site yet? Any of that stuff?
Not out at the site.
Not sitting there, but we have for certain events.
Okay.
Mm hmm, yeah.
But again, that comes down to like engaging people and talking with them about it and making sure we're hitting, you know, it it comes down to the same thing as the Parks Master Plan, you know, we. I feel like we repeatedly hit the same people and we need to find a way to get that information out. And maybe that's part of our first step. Is sending out mailers to our community. Hey, this is something we feel really passionately about. The Legion has a note. That's attached to a postcard that shares that information. I think we should use Veterans Day to talk to people, but I wanna make sure that we have. Talking points before we approach people, people.
I hear you and I agree. My concern is that we have been now talking about this for the last year and we don't have anything to show in terms of timeline or our budget in terms of how much we're trying to raise. So to go out and keep talking about it without having tangible, concrete, something. Is just us talking. And I feel like we start to lose credibility because we don't have anything to show for what we're doing. So I agree with you. But it's like this chicken and egg of like, we need some action to be able to show we're making progress. And we need your support. So, yeah, so. We can talk about it. It's.
Yeah.
This is. It's a chicken and egg.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Again, I would, I would go back to the, we don't wanna roll something out that's not well organized and well prepared or we lose people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. Works next month.
Yeah.
So are we just gonna do the work session and cancel our? Other meetings?
Yeah. Were we coming in earlier to? Work with your guys this meeting as well? You said you were at six or were you pushing something back?
I think we're gonna be at six at soul and then we'll speed over here at the.
Okay.
Right, even our, our meeting short.
And we'll do library part here at six.
Yeah. Sounds like a drinking meeting. We should all go to soul.
I know. If only it was bigger for all of us. We might get less sun though with the beer involved.
So.
More and more. Said you got some, like, funding yourselves that night.
I would say it's a tough.
In the upstairs? For all of us in the Legion?
What is that? What you guys do? You're upstairs or downstairs? Or you just move it next door?
Yep.
Full room.
Okay. We're dragging on, it's eight. We're gonna move forward. That is okay. We will have a uh, a whole meeting to discuss more of this.
Yeah.
Future meetings calendar. So we have now just set November. We hit a new L.
Dead.
No more L.
System.
Holy system.
Good.
Holy game.
Part of it.
So this is all replacing our meeting that would have been on the twelve. Then we'll just continue as well, the second week of December.
Yeah, oh, I think they're actually.
Should we try and admit, bid something else? For a long time.
But we're into a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on December, you do have down uh, through retreat agenda, which I agree we should definitely. Get something together in December for our January retreat and know exactly what we're gonna be talking about. Um, now, we. Because we skipped over elections. We didn't talk about election laws or something, cuz that was November meeting. We're supposed to be doing that, or we can just remove. Site visit or, we could just do the library, I think, and not do anything else.
Mm hmm.
And then uh, we get through that and Legion's not here yet. We can always put, we can change the agenda. Well, we can't do a work session then. Yeah, having a. Election on a work session, you'd have to have a regular meeting.
Mm hmm.
His decisions are raised. Also have to, if we want to do a regular meeting, then on the thirteen.
Can we do that in December, the December meeting? The elections or is that too close?
I would say no.
You can do it back to back. You can have a meeting in November.
We, why, can we just plug it in at the beginning of that?
Yeah, we could do, we could do a meeting in the beginning. The the site could be the meeting.
Yeah.
And then our election and then we would transfer into a work session afterwards. At, I'll just say, s- six, six thirty is the. Yeah. Meeting and six thirty is the special or not, that's the work session.
Okay, that works.
Would the work session work better if we came to you? Do you think everyone would come here? Or do you think it would be better to?
I don't know.
Go to the source?
Yeah.
I know, I figured, but.
I think right now. It would be more successful.
We should just go down there. So you also had down potential visit of another municipality's facility? Do we have any update?
Bring you one down there.
That's all. Nobody wants to make a trip somewhere. What would you go for?
Oh, that'd be fun for December.
Cancel everything else that it's gonna take. I'm okay with that cuz we used to cancel December meetings. Um, I I'd like the idea of a visit of somebody else's facility so we can start. Getting things in our brains, what we want and what, once our master plan and the feasibility setting, everything's done. We've got an idea what other communities are doing and what people are using and what works. So I like the idea of the the visit, but I wanna go back to the moving forward cuz we don't have January and all that. Um. After the retreat, while we're still in cold weather and we're still in winter, I wanna start thinking about doing these larger discussions about the big items where. We don't have time to do a visit, so. I wanna let you guys start thinking about that, the large items, and maybe we start talking about. Some of the C I P stuff that we had discussed prior. Might not happen because once the master plan is done, we might go in a different direction, but these are like the larger meetings that we should be having while we're. Not able to get out, not able to do these visits, so. And then, you know, pick an item for a month and then like we're doing for the the Veterans Guard.
Mm hmm.
Pick something large and let's spend a lot of time on it and get it done. That way, when we get action items, we've already had those big discussions. And we're keeping all our meetings kind of a little shorter and just making votes cuz we've already made.
Mm hmm.
You know, decisions and got things on paper, so.
I think that sounds great.
And then that way during better weather, we can go back out and do visits and have fun and do some lighter stuff.
You're talking about our events?
Yeah.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Well, I mean, like, you know, Fourth of July planning, you know, that stuff should be happening months and months ahead. Which really, if we're gonna do a float again, you know, that kinda got thrown out the last minute last year and we didn't. You know, not everybody's ideas got put in there. I'd love to be getting these things done a lot sooner and then. At later in the summer, we're gonna have to start talking about budget because that's October, November, December, all that, so.
Do we know if the town is planning or if there's any plan to do the same stuff for St. Patty's Day this year? Because if that's something that we need to start talking about, we should, that should be a January, like, discussion, like you said. If we get in front of it enough, cuz if we wait till February, we're right on the. But.
You could make it a retreat item too.
Talk about events for the year?
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Alternate locations for parades is something that's been kind of figured out right now, so.
Because of the construction.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they're.
When is that supposed to break ground?
But maybe January is a good time to start taking about that cuz they'll probably have that information.
Is there a, is there a date for like, when they're gonna start breaking ground?
February.
Okay.
Mm hmm. Which is a huge conversation in of itself too.
Yeah.
That would probably.
This is a.
Eliminate our, uh, heading today.
Was he still light?
Yeah. So that is, this is something that we still added on our own, so when you guys are coming up with ideas.
You guys also already mentioned earlier, you wanna do activities planning for kids of the park and for Arbor Day, so. But those are two big discussion items too, so I'd put those on early year agendas. Because especially Billy has to bring this whole through.
Well, since we're gonna approve the retreat agenda in December. I think if we can start working on ideas. For the retreat itself and then also the future calendar, like you said, these events.
Mm hmm.
We gotta be months ahead of them. We can be just like. So we can start getting some of that on this. Before the December meeting. It's gonna help us out a lot to get that agenda done or approved. Yeah, I would just say we need to start in between meetings. Doing into the Google Drive and that is, you know, having a doctor know of the agenda, updating the agenda. So like you said, when we get here, it's basically ready to just put on and approve.
Yeah.
Um, and then the same thing with the. Calendar. The future meetings calendar. There's stuff out there. Okay. If nobody else has a little um, future meetings calendar, we'll move forward. With announcements. It will say my ride is on its way though, so.
Yeah.
I uh, not drop off my, my kid today.
That's fine. I'll go.
Oh, man.
Blew up the sprinklers.
Maybe. Uh, just parks quick update. Uh, maybe a larger scale thing. We're really trying to get in, uh, I mean, probably at the underpass, when more of the winter comes, Public Works, they've got an engineer on it. Um. That that would just be like one of the big updates that we're just trying to get done. We do have the bike fix station, so as we go through and do. The Public Works crew has time to do winter concrete when the weather's nice. Hopefully get those put in. Um, trail, you know, integration. Um, we're doing the the programming. I sent that out to you, so please, if you know any company that would wanna do quarter page or half page or something like that. Uh, I don't. We do need to kind of know cuz we're trying to get that out and out to print as soon as possible so that it's well in people's hands and on the website. Uh, before. Um. Just trying to go quick. I guess as maybe uh. Uh, don't do this a lot, but you all should know as a, maybe a little self-promotion, uh, internally. Um. Town staff and administration. Uh, gave me a promotion from a manager to a director, so I'm now officially the director of Parks.
Well deserved.
You. Uh, that happened a couple, couple of weeks ago. So that's pretty cool. Um, and then we. You will see, uh. We've, we've been doing a lot of work, um, I've been doing a lot of work with our town attorney. There was a Senate bill last year that needed to be fulfilled by. Middle of this year to roll it out by the end of this year. A lot of our requirements for code of conduct that were in the Senate bill were. For the most part, up to date, we were pretty compliant, but there's just some things that we had to work on, so I've kind of wrote a whole new policy. For our code of conduct and that goes for volunteer coaches, mandatory reporting.
Hmm.
Um, offering mandatory report training. Uh, but uh, spectators code of conduct and uh. Uh, parents code of conduct as well as like adults, um, code of conduct if they're playing sports. So. That's just been a a large undertaking, but it's on our website now and that's like certain things that were very specific in the Senate bill that we've had to. Follow up on, so. Um, if you if you hear any grubs from anybody that knows volunteer coaches, because we give them more paperwork, say it was a Senate bill, we have to continue. To be, I I know, I know, we wish we didn't have to, but um. We looked through that and it took a lot of time to to work with.
It's important work, it's important work.
Yeah, and it it's a kind of work that like, you know, it's, that's why I have my. Yeah, and it it's a kind of work that like, you know, it's, that's why I have my job and. It's what I'm getting to do, to make sure that we're protecting ourselves, it's a talent, we're compliant with. Legislation, so.
And for helping our kids, yep.
Yes. Yeah, so so currently, just so everybody knows, uh, being a municipality, we. We technically don't have to require mandatory reporting training. But all of our volunteers and considered in that is all of our staff, because they help run programs. Everybody is a mandatory reporter. We, again, we don't have to require the training, though we do provide it. Uh, that was, it was fought pretty hard at the Senate level by advocates, um, at the municipal level. To not require the training, because. If you require the training, one, um, there there are places you can find it for free, but the free ones are two hours. And they're not the ones where you can just click on it and go back, you literally have like every page you pass to click on. To move to the next one, very important, I'm not trying to dismay that out like that is, it is super, super important to do. But requiring it when you flip over coaches over, we might be able to here. Because our coaches usually go from soccer to football, so they'll be okay for two years. But in the larger municipalities like Denver, where you have thousands of kids and you soccer a lot and they don't coach anything else, it's like. Hundreds of coaches have to do that, you're gonna find half of them don't want to do it, then your programs are diminished, so. They're really good advocate advocates on the Parks and Recreation side for specifically that Colorado Parks and Recreation, CPRA. They're like, look, we are doing everything we can, but we can't take this leap right away, so, um. Just kind of give some grace to the volunteer coaches, but also give some grace to us, because it's not us necessarily saying all of that. So there will be some changes, um, they're all posted to our website, our code of conduct is much more concise now, though. Done through that. Uh, oh, sorry, other cool note, I do have to say, um, I went to CPRA, our staff did Colorado Parks Recreation. Uh, the annual conference and, um, yeah, I was, uh. Voluntold kind of to um, run for vice chair for the directors section, so it's. CPRA is like, there's tons of different aquatic sections and track sections, whatever. Uh, but there's a director's sections that basically run and the meetings and set up, um, learning and. Growth opportunities for the directors, uh, that are part of the organization. I got voted in to be the vice chair, so then next year, two years from now, I'll be the chair of the director's section, which is pretty cool. So with that, I'm hoping that what we have here. That we need to find outlets for, like maybe finding funding for things that we can't. There will be some good contacts that I'll be able to grow on a on a higher level that have gone through these types of things, both small and large municipalities. So, party friends with someone with the Colorado Lottery who funds GoCo, so they're like, come on. She's like, I'll come up and run a lottery, and like, I'll do a lottery pro, I want to be your vet, and I was like, sweet. She's just cruising around the the place, just like, here's a scratch ticket, just scratching. Uh, so so they're all, hopefully, as we move forward, we're just trying to build and grow our department, um, there were four of us that went up for training. We all got some really good sessions and learned a bunch of stuff at each different levels, and it's it's really good to not just. See that, but also be around the peers and grow those relationships, so opportunities come by any day.
Connection is essential.
Yeah.
Don't feel so.
That's that's my side.
We're out here.
Hi, big update here.
Have something major they wanna, I I I really gotta get.
No, I mean, I could just talk to people afterwards, but the ninety percent design stunt, so it has trees. And landscaping.
See in a couple of weeks.
And.
Thanks, John.
Bye, John, thank you.
Yeah, so that's updated, if you guys do want to take a look at that, there's a lot of trees.
So excited.
Eight eighteen. Motion to adjourn, eight nineteen now, yes?
Side second.